Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out on a chilly evening. Always nice to be together. Welcome to the New York Torah Project at home, and we've got lots to talk about. Excited to share with you. We're going to start with the sports from our rabbi.
Good evening, everyone. We live in very active times. History is being made around us every day, history that we will still talk about and remember in generations to come. In this week's Torah portion, by era, Abraham and Sarah encounter numerous momentous events just in this portion. They are told they'll have a baby in their old age, their neighboring towns are nearly destroyed, and Abraham asked to intervene to save his nephew Lot. Abraham and Sarah's marriage is repeatedly tested with family issues. And finally, as if the rest wasn't enough, Abraham is told to sacrifice his son Isaac as a test. The Torah literally uses the word "test" as God's call to Abraham to sacrifice Isaac. So the commentators wonder, what was Abraham's test? The fifteenth-century commentator Saforno says Abraham's test was an opportunity to show that he emulates the virtues of God. His test was how he would present himself when facing incredibly challenging circumstances. In light of the challenging circumstances around us, this is a core reminder that we must always hold to our values as Jews and as human beings. At RTFH, we have faced challenges and struggles, but we have stayed true to our essence and therefore stayed strong as a congregation. We must keep asking the questions: What is best for our community? How can we balance individuals' needs with the larger congregation? What path will support RTFH right now and still keep an eye on our temple for the future? Life presents a few too many of these tests, but by staying strong in our beliefs and holding each other close, we've created a congregation of strength, faith, and possibility together.
So good evening again, everybody. It's nice to be with you once again and to be able to talk about what I think is some very good news that we want to share and explain. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the redevelopment work and where we stand. And then Jill and the team are going to talk about our wonderful Torah project. Both of these, I think, will preview a little bit during the high holidays. Andy spoke about both topics in his Kol Nidre address, and so you may have a sense of some of what we're going to talk about. But we understand that people have questions and we want to be able to explore it a little more tonight. So start with what I think, as I say, is good news that after a lot of thought, a lot of struggle, a lot of working on this issue, we have come to what we think is the right conclusion for the temple, that we can stay in our current space. And could you use the mic? Because the loud room will be blocked without the microphone.
Okay. Okay, so I should repeat the punchline so that people... Okay, so sorry at home if you saw me talking, but you couldn't hear. So what I started to say was that we are come to you with very good news that after a lot of work by a lot of people and a lot of thought and analysis, we believe that the right choice for our temple at this moment is to stay here in our current home. And if you've been sort of unfortunate enough to be at these talks over the years, that may come as some surprise because we have talked going back. I think the first time we broached this subject was certainly before the pandemic. It was 2017, something like that, so seven or eight years ago, maybe. You may be wondering how we got here. Well, first, we got here because of tremendous support from our community. We've asked you, over the past few years in particular, to do a little more, to be more generous, to give, to support us, and you've responded. And that has put us in a much better financial position in terms of the money that we take in from dues. We also, because we have wonderful programming and we're led by wonderful clergy, rabbi, and the cantor, we've been able to continue to attract new members. Our religious school is very strong. We have a higher enrollment this year than we've had in the past. And so while a lot of synagogues across the city, across the country, have had declining, sometimes very serious declines in membership, we've been able to hold stable and actually grow a bit, and so that's good news, too. So we have more growth, and we also have more revenue coming in from our membership because of the work you do. Those are two very important contributors. The third was a little bit serendipitous. We did start out, as you know, intending to redevelop the site. We went through the work to rezone this property, which means that before we did anything, you couldn't build housing on this site. We went to the city council and to a number of other places. We got permission to change it so that you could build housing here. And we were intending, as you know, to build housing, and we would occupy the bottom floors of that. But when the pandemic came, and more importantly, when the tax break that allowed builders to be able to do that work expired, we were in a pause. And we couldn't go forward with what our plans were. Our developer partners weren't ready to do it. And so we didn't just use that time to sit around. We used that time to look at all our options. Part of that was to look around and see, are there other places we could go in the interim when they were redeveloping our site? Because obviously, while they're doing construction here, we could not be here. And so we needed to find another home for a period of time. And as we looked around, not just the community, the most immediate community, but even the larger Queens area, we had a lot of trouble finding something that we thought would meet our needs, particularly for classroom space, which I know is a real concern with parents of religious school students who don't want their children to have to walk or travel long distances at the end of the day or during for religious school. And so we had a lot of trouble, and so that gave us some level of concern. The other thing we found out is that there are a lot of people who want to rent space from us. And as you may know, we had had a long-term partnership with the Department of Education. That went away in 2021, I believe. And we had that space vacant, and we didn't realize how valuable that was as an asset. And we started to hear from people who were interested in running childcare programs, in our space, and that's something, frankly, we had not really contemplated before. And so we had a number of people who came to us, a broker who came to us, willing to rent our space. We had others who came to us willing to rent our space. And so that made us realize that we could rent the space and gain valuable revenue from that. And combined with the other increased revenue from our membership, we have a whole different look at our financial situation than we thought we did. So the combination of bringing in more money from our members, asking you to do more, which you responded so well, and being able to rent our space put us in a very different financial picture than we thought we were in four or five years ago. We started to look at the numbers, what would be required to stay, how much we could rent the space, and we think we are doing quite well. As you may know, we already have rented a portion of the space to the Montessori school, which has been operating since September. They are going strong. They've grown a bit since they started. They hope to grow further. And that has shown us that this works well. It doesn't interfere with temple operations, which of course is very important. They just use it during the week. And they have their own space to be able to operate in the way they want to. We've also had others who approach us, but we're working right now with the Montessori school, and that seems to be a good partnership. So we think that financially it works to stay, but we are cognizant of a couple of things. Number one, we can't stay here unless we make some improvements to the building. It's still, all the things that we talked about a few years ago are still true. It's an aging building. The accessibility is not great for, it's actually quite bad for people. The audiovisual needs, the multimedia needs are not great when you have cords all over the place and you have to string something up every time. So we need to invest in the building. And so one of the things we thought a lot about is, if we're going to stay, we can't be blind to those needs. We have to do the accessibility very early on because that's a commitment we made to the community. And when we were going through this process, a lot of people said, "I need to be able to go to a synagogue where my parent can come, where I can come as I age, where people in my life that I love can come here without having to struggle up the stairs." So that's a very important commitment that we made and we realize that we need to keep. So we're going to, we looked at what it would take to do that. We looked at some of the other needs, some of the ones that are not so sexy, like the roof and some of the other things that have to be addressed if you have any kind of building. And we sized those up, and we think that with renting the space and the other financial contributions I talked about, we can make it work here. We've already started to invest a little bit in the building. If you were here someday in August, it was like 110 degrees in this building, you may remember. And if you were here last Hanukkah, it was freezing. So we've had both extremes. And that's because the HVAC in the sanctuary was like from the Stone Ages. And so we, over the summer in August, right before Labor Day, we replaced it with a new system. If you, you know, you walked out on the street, when you saw it, Rabbi said it was like something with wires all over the place. The old one was like with wires all over the place. You couldn't believe it actually worked. So we have a brand-new HVAC in this, for the sanctuary that keeps us cool, hopefully at the right times, and warm, hopefully at the right times. So that's one example of something that we did and that we will have to continue to do. So as we go forward, we believe that we have enough money for the programming to continue to support the wonderful work that we do, that our rabbi and clergy does, the other kinds of programs we run, and still be able to invest in the building. One thing you might say is, is this an irrevocable decision? If we make this decision now, what happens if something goes bad? If we decide we can't stay here, if the building falls apart, there's greater needs than we thought there were? We can't find a tenant. The tenants, we have a tenant now. It's a new business, though. Like a lot of new businesses, they don't always succeed. And so is that a risk to our staying if they don't succeed and they can't make it work, even though we obviously hope that they do? And I would say no. Number one, it's not irrevocable because what we have discovered during this process is this site rezoned is a very, very valuable asset. We have been approached by many, many developers willing to take this building off our hands and put us in new space without having to go to interim space. So for example, there are two buildings going up on Queens Boulevard. One where the Tower Diner site was, one on the other side of Queens Boulevard with a budget blind, whatever that blinds, yeah, okay. Two beautiful new buildings, residential buildings, both of them came to us and said that they would buy this building from us, and they would give us space in those, on the first floor and one, and then on a basement, and then, but classroom space and religious school space. And the timing would work so that we wouldn't have to spend a day in the wilderness. They would develop that space. We would leave here, and then they would redevelop here. We looked at both of those. I don't think either one of those worked perfectly well for us. They're a little bit outside our community. One of the spaces was in the basement, so it wasn't great space for a sanctuary setting. But my point is, there are lots of other developers who are building buildings in Forest Hills who are continuing to be interested in this space. I got a call from another one today who's interested in buying the building. And he says, I don't know exactly where, he says he has other space that we could move into right in the neighborhood. There will continue to be other buildings built. I've heard varying things about where the bagel store, the one where Forest, yeah, Walgreens is, right, that that may be developed. I bet a developer there would be interested in doing a similar kind of deal. So there will be other opportunities. Do we know exactly in five years which way it'll be and where we could move? No, but the need for housing in New York City will continue. If you believe that New York City will continue to be strong, which we all hope, there will always be developers who'll be looking for sites. And so there will be opportunities for us, if we want, in the future to be able to do that kind of deal where we could sell our space and move into somewhere else. There are also other opportunities while we hope the Montessori school works out, if that doesn't work out. We've had other people call us from daycare centers. Forest Hills is considered, and some of you may know this, an under-populated community for childcare preschool programs. And so there are a number of preschool programs that are interested in opening. As I said, as we experienced ourselves when we were trying to find classroom space for the religious school, it's not easy to find that kind of space. And so that also is a very valuable asset. So we have two very valuable assets that will remain. One is the rental of our classroom space, and two is the building, and the land, really. It's less the building and more the land that we are on. And so this decision, while we think it is the right decision in the moment, we think it's the best decision for our congregation because it allows us to stay here, not have the disruption of moving, continue to be in a sanctuary which is beautiful and a building that meets our needs. We understand that there are things that happen in the future. There are contingencies. And so we would not want to be in the position of locking us into something that we could not change in the future. Now, a couple of things just to review that we also did explore during that period, as I said, when we were on pause. We had a number of discussions with the Forest Hills Jewish Center about working together with them. Everything from sharing space together to developing some kind of site. The discussions were productive at some point, but they ultimately, up to some point, but they ultimately decided to go their own way and do it in a way that they did not want to include us. They're, as you know, they're in the process of tearing down the Horror Show Hospital, whatever it's called, Parkway Hospital, right? It looks, it's like a set of a horror movie. If you drive, you see it from the highway. The window's broken and this graffiti, anyway. So they're in the early stages. They said that they're going to be open there in 2026. I think it's well beyond that. It's 27, it may be 28. You know, it's at least three years from when they started. Haven't really even started. And they're saying that they're committed to staying where they are, and then they'll move there. It'll be a little bit different when they are our neighbor, but, you know, we'll try and play well together. So that, we did have discussions with them. We also talked to other congregations. We had a number of meetings with Hillcrest Jewish Center, which is sort of outside our target area. They were interested in also renting to us. They ultimately sold their building to a group of Bucarians. They're renting, the group that was the Hillcrest Jewish Center is renting just their sanctuary area for 20, they have a 20-year lease just for that space, and the Bucarian community controls the rest of the building. So we, and we had other discussions with other groups, too. So we tried to explore every option for partnership, for rental. And as I say, the pandemic and the pause caused by the development change, the loss of the partnership, we thought was initially a pain in the neck that would set us back and make life even more difficult. It turned out to be a real blessing in disguise because it gave us the time to think about it, to explore these options, to hear from people who are interested in our space. And we ended up, I think, in a very positive place. And so I'll end with where I began, to thank everybody for all their support. I know this has been a very difficult period, been a lot of ups and downs. Particularly, some of you with benedict children have wondered. I know about where the site of your benedict would be, how hard it would be for somewhere else, not in the building that you love. I know it's been hard, just emotionally, for people to contemplate going somewhere else and all the rest. But you've always supported and been willing to listen, and we appreciate that. And you've responded by continuing to make us a wonderful congregation and a wonderful community that I think we all could be proud of. We have wonderful clergy, as I say, who've led us through a very, very difficult year. And we've had a very, very difficult few years with everything going on. And of course, not to get too into the world, but we've still got what's coming in the future. So, but I thank you all for all your support. And what I will pledge is to always be transparent with our decisions. This is the best decision for our congregation at the moment, I believe. I can't pledge to you that something will never change because that would be a lie. But what I will pledge is if something does change and facts change and we have to look at this differently, we'll come back and have a discussion about it. There will be no surprises. And that's what I think is very important. And one of the things that has made our congregation strong is that we can have an open discussion like this even as we struggle with the issue. So thank you for that. We'll take questions after we do the next part. As I said, the financial support that you provided is critical to our staying. And even though we think we have a path to staying, that path is predicated on continued strong financial support from our congregation. But we have a wonderful way to express that support, which is the Torah Project, which I think has a wonderful community-building effort and is really going to bring us even closer together as a community while it raises really valuable money for our congregation. So we know that you've heard about it a little bit. You may have questions about it, about some aspect of it. And we have the experts who are here. We've already had a wonderful response from our congregation that we're very excited about. And so I want to talk a little bit more about this, and Jill, you're going to start us off.
Hi, this is, okay, I'm going to use this one. Hi, I'm Jill Manis. I'm the treasurer here and the co-chair of the Torah Project. And the purpose of this presentation is to discuss the specifics of this extraordinary Torah Project. We have a lot of events going on this year, and I'm not going to discuss all the events that we have going on. I'm just going to talk about this Torah Project. So we have a lot of project chairs in this project. And today, we're going to have a couple of people talking. Mike Katz and Marsha Parnas and Mike Samuels and Neil Manis and Stephanie Lazarus. So they're going to walk you through, and myself. But today, I'm going to talk about a few things. We unusually forego the traditional Kol Nidre campaign and other major fundraising for this Torah Project. And why do we do that? We wanted to make sure that everybody could participate in this project. Our annual contributions do not cover all our costs. We always say that every year, even though we raised our dues, we depend upon fundraising even with our increased rates. Our budget assumes $100,000 of fundraising. The cost of our new lightweight Torah has been fully funded. So every dollar that you contribute goes right to our programming and everything that we, to whatever we raise here. So everything that you donate will go right to our bottom line. So can we double our fundraising goal of $100,000? As Seth was saying, we have an aging building. We will definitely try to develop grants to increase that impact, but it doesn't come in immediately. If we have a grant, it sometimes takes a year, two years, or even three years to develop. But we want to be proactive. We need to raise that extra money and build that nest egg. We want to be a healthy, financially, temple, and we never want to scramble for that money. Now, we know that we're asking for a lot of money. I'm sure that a lot of you have gone to the website and seen what we're asking for this Torah Project. So we want to be creative about ways to give. Gifts could be divided through shulkads. You do not have to give it right away. You could divide it through the year. Family and non-members are welcome, so encourage your family members to donate as well. You could be a mitzvah maker. You could sponsor somebody else if you want to donate, if you know somebody can't afford it. And you could also consider donating securities. And you could save 20% of federal taxes and state taxes, and you could get the full deduction for doing so. And if you're over 70 and a half, you could give your IRA. Or if you were so lucky and you got a beneficiary IRA, you could donate that. You could contact me or Alan Hopperman, and we could give you the information. You could wire the money to us, and we could give you the bank account for our temple. So there's lots of ways to do it, and a lot of it is painless. I'm going to introduce you now to Mike Katz, and he's going to walk you through a lot of the Q and A and some questions you might have, and you could ask him questions.
Hi, everybody. Don't ask too many questions. I don't know if I'll have the answers, but I'm here to help. All right, so I'm going to turn to the side here. You could not get blinded. No, I'm not going to turn this way. All right, so I think we've heard some confusion around. Talk to me about the different parts of this project. I think there's two distinct things to talk about. One is the opportunity to actually write a letter in the Torah, and the other is a dedication component. So as we think about, the first part is, there's actually a scribe in Israel writing this Torah as we speak. And so as they go through this process, they will give us an opportunity to put a letter in that does not necessarily correlate to what a dedication might be, but it is a moment in time when they are writing out this Torah. So we have an opportunity in progress to go in. So, we have an opportunity in progress to go in and trace over a letter, a really meaningful contribution to a Torah that we hope will stay in this community for a long time. We actually have the scribes coming. Oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you. I'll go into my vanna here. We actually have a scribe coming to the temple, two different weeks, Sundays and Mondays in February and March, so we have plenty of time to go ahead and get those donations in and secure some time to actually come in as an individual, a family, a group, and be a part of this amazing opportunity. And this scribe will actually, like I said, allow you to, they'll have an outline there. You can actually go in and put it into the Torah. And then, obviously, once that's all done, we'll go ahead, get the parchment put together and pull the Torah together. Why should we be doing this? Well, we talked about the financial implications. Obviously, there's a lot of opportunity here. Second, though, when you think about what we're contributing to the community, the opportunity to have a lightweight new Torah that you and your family can read from and know that you have contributed for generations to come, it's pretty important, pretty impactful. And obviously, the last part was, we were just talking about all the different opportunities that are required for staying in the building, how we want to become ADA compliant, some of the building renovations that are required. So, this is an opportunity to not just invest in this project, but it's in the community and the building and the future. Go to the next slide? All right. So, what does this mean? We are, in addition to filling in the outlined letters in the text that are sent by the scribe, your dedication will be different, almost assuredly, than the letter you get to fill out. And that's okay. This will be handled much like we do with yard sites. So, you will get a notification that the letter, the word, the phrase, the book that you have sponsored is coming up and gives you an opportunity to be closer and a meaningful part of whatever this moment in time or this text, as it is important to you, get to come in and be a part of it with the community. When does this happen? Well, all right. So, each family that makes a dedication of $360 or more will have the opportunity to complete that one letter. And in addition to writing with the scribe, there'll be a number of activities that everybody will be able to take part in. So, again, it's meant to be more than just this one single action, but it's meant to be kind of a community gathering, a celebration, an opportunity for people to come together. I think we go to the next slide. All right. So, when does this happen? Once you make a dedication, we will be reaching out from the Torah Project Committee, happening soon, to set up time and make sure that you guys can come together and actually sit with the scribe. The actual writing of the Torah, again, happens on Sundays and Mondays in February, 9th and 10th, and March 23rd to 24th. And you will work with a member of the Torah Committee to schedule that time when we'll be reaching out separately. So, hopefully, we were able to separate kind of the writing of the letter and the scribe and the dedication, both really important. I think it's a really interesting opportunity. Yes?
Can you talk about the dedication? What is dedication? Explain the dedication.
So, what is the dedication? It's an opportunity to pick out a name, a word, a reading during a certain time of the year that is meaningful to you, your family, either in memoriam, or maybe it's your child's or your own bar mitzvah or bat mitzvah portion. It is an opportunity to take a piece of our Torah, of our scripture, and kind of get even a little bit closer to it, make it your own in some ways, through either kind of securing through this dedication, as we're calling it, just an opportunity to kind of make it your own and connect it to people in your life. Anything you would add? Anything you'd want to?
Just that, and then like you said, the yard site, when your dedication comes up in the Torah, you'll be notified by the temple and then you'll be asked to come and for a honor or something to make it up. You're going to dedicate that one.
Yeah, yes. Alan?
Also, yeah, just to mention that.
Should we pass this around?
Individuals can set up a payment plan to, yeah. Individuals can set up a payment plan in order to fulfill their obligation toward the Torah Project. Also, more than one family could contribute part of the $360 and approach the temple, you know, as a group.
Mike, can the Rabbi Encanter help you pick a dedication if you're not sure what dedication to pick?
Why, yes, Rabbi. Thank you for calling that out. Yes, obviously, the Rabbi, obviously, the Rabbi Encanter are here to help. If you are interested in doing this and would like to talk through it and identify passages or scripture that is potentially meaningful to you. Any other tips or tricks from the community here? Yes?
Just that also you can do it in memory or in honor of someone, so not only can the dedication itself be meaningful, but the way you're dedicating can be meaningful as well.
Yeah, so just for anybody on the, online, it can be in memoriam or for somebody in honor of. Yes?
If someone spreads their donation over time, what is the end point in time? How much time is there to break that? 10 months?
Okay, so the question is, how long do we have to spread out a dedication? And the answer is 10 months. Yeah. Any other questions? Yeah, sorry. All right. I was getting into a rhythm. I thought it was, you know. Let me hand it over to Mike.
Hi, I'm Michael Samuels. I'm the webmaster of Archivace.org, and I'm here to present the website here. So, here is the Torah Project website. So, basically, everything that you're going to hear today, everything that's in the handout brochure that you've seen in the temple, every question that you're asking should be answered on this website. It's a lot, okay? At the top of the page, you have the FAQ, you have the ways to give, and then there's a lot here. There's the Rabbi's speech at Rosh Hashanah, I believe it was, explaining it. And then, as we get down, it talks about the different events that we're having to celebrate our 30th anniversary that's also part of this. And then, it gets into the dedication opportunities, and that's what we're talking about. If you just literally click on the word dedication opportunities, it should, no, maybe not? This is going to open a new window, maybe? Well, it should be on both, but it opened now. Zoom in, and it'll make it bigger, but these are 130-something, 180 different dedication opportunities that you can potentially dedicate, broken down by, obviously, donation. There's more, right? If you have something that's not on this list, we have big text at the top. If you don't see something here, you have something, a different creative idea, reach out to the cantor, reach out to the rabbi, reach out to a project chair, and we will make it happen for you. We want everybody to participate in this in any which way that they can or they want to. So, these are the full list of dedication opportunities and more. And then, this link exists multiple, wrong one, multiple places on this page. But then, further down, it describes what you're going to get for each level of dedication. The highest level, from $80,000 up to $50,000, $50,000 and more, is a whole lot of stuff, you know, which Marcia will talk about, so I'm not going to go into it. But this site explains all of it and gives you a link to go and to Shulkad to make your gift. We'll accept cookies today. So, please, take your time on the site, read it, absorb it all. I know it's a lot, but it's a very, it's an important project for us. And of course, at the bottom, we have the Mitzvah Makers, which Marcia also will talk about to support someone else. There's buttons all throughout the site, so if you want to, need to get somewhere, the enlisted dedications, the FAQ, the ways to give, the recognition of benefits, the big old button to make a gift, you know. If you have questions on any of it, me, any of the Torah Project Chairs, please reach out. But I would rather have Marcia talk about the recognition of benefits. If you have more questions on the site, you know, I'm available. Get back to that. Marcia?
So, writing a letter in the Torah or contributing to the Torah Project is in and of itself a gift, and we'll be giving you gifts too. We want to express our sincere appreciation for every donor's participation and generosity. As Chair of the Recognition Team, I'm excited to share the many ways you will be recognized for your contribution, as well as the many exciting benefits that you'll receive. So, don't be daunted. We're not going to say every single thing on every single slide, and I'll explain how this will work. As a supporter of Torah for gifts under $360, thank you, the benefits will include the donor recognition at Simchat Torah Service 2025, a recognition in commemorative digital display at temple, on the RTFH website, and a commemorative certificate. Then, as a friend of Torah, where your gifts are from $360 to $999, that's when you'll have the opportunity to write a letter in the Torah with the scribe. The digital photo, you'll get a digital photo of scribing with the sofa and a Torah honor at Shabbat services, which was described by Mike, both Michaels. You'll see with the bullets that are open circles, those are the benefits that were for the prior level, so I'm not going to repeat them. We can go on to the next one, the Sustainers of Torah, and you'll see that those gifts of $1,000 to $2,499, the benefits will include two complimentary tickets to the 30th Anniversary Concert, two complimentary tickets to a chamber music concert, and a keepsake four-by-six photo of writing with the sofa. And again, the benefits from the prior level. For our next level, the Leaders of Torah, we've got gifts of $2,500 to $4,999, and the benefits include an invitation for two people to a special breakfast and small group learning session with Rabbi, tickets again to the Anniversary Concert, this time with reserved seating, tickets to a chamber music concert with reserved seating, and a five-by-seven photo of writing with the scribe. And the prior benefits. The Pillars of Torah, gifts of $5,000 to $9,999, will be four tickets to the 30th Anniversary Concert, four complimentary tickets to the Chamber Music Concert, a keepsake framed five-by-seven photo, and the prior benefits. The Guardians of Torah will have benefits including a Hebrew name, up to two, inscribed by the sofa, two complimentary tickets to the Eris Dance Party, an invitation to a celebratory VIP champagne toast prior to the dance party, and reserved seating for all the Torah Project and 30th Anniversary events. And for our major, major donors with gifts of $18,000 to $50,000 and more, we have a private Torah text study session with Rabbi, a choice of a Torah text to be sung at the 30th Anniversary Concert, Hebrew name, all members of your immediate family, or a full verse of Torah inscribed by the sofa on parchment, and four complimentary tickets to our Eris Dance Party. And that will be the benefits. We also want to highlight something that is new since we launched the project, and that is this new level, which is called Torah Mitzvah Makers. And this is a gift of anything $18 or above, where you donate anonymously to help more people in our community participate in the Mitzvah of writing with the sofa. And what you should be aware of is that you don't need to be able to identify who needs that support. Our Torah Project Chairs can do that, and so you may either give an amount that can go to anyone who needs assistance, or you can donate the full $360 or more and honor a specific person or family who you know would appreciate and not be, would appreciate the experience and not be able to partake in it. And in that case, you yourself, as it's an anonymous donation, will be getting a certificate, but you will not get any of the public recognition, and the person who you've sponsored will get that recognition and benefits. I'd like to add that there are two ways for you to be able to become a Mitzvah maker. One is, there is a separate donation form. When Michael put up at the bottom where it said Mitzvah Makers, it said become a Mitzvah maker. That is a separate donation form for that category. The other place you can do that is, oh, there it is, that's the form. The other place that you can do that is if you have yet to put in your donation and your dedication, at the end of the original make-a-gift form, there is now a question about, would you like to also be a Mitzvah maker? So, I hope everyone is excited, both by the opportunity in and of itself and the benefits and recognition that you'll get. And as you know, all of this is beautifully laid out on the website, and in case there's any questions at this point, I'll turn the program over to Neil Manis and Stephanie Lazarus, who are going to tell us about our plans for the religious school.
So, there'll be a religious school connection, and Neil and myself are working with Fay and one of the parents, Jocelyn Cooperman, on planning activities. And one of the activities is going to be a very hands-on activity where the children are going to have the opportunity to experience and explore the different parts of the Torah. So, they're going to get to see the breastplate, the crown, they're going to be able to touch it. We're going to bring it into the classroom, and then they're going to be able to sketch a picture of what it looks like. So, we'll have pictures like this up on the cards in the classroom for everyone to see because we want the students to go home with a feeling of excitement that they want to be part of this. And so, when they do this project in class, they'll be able to go home and show their parents, this is what we're doing, we really want to be a part of this, and dedicate and donate to the Torah Project.
My name's Neil Manis, and I feel like one of the most meaningful things we're going to do for our children is that they're going to receive a My Torah Letter. What does that kind of mean? Well, Abay Keizman will invite every family to join their child's class as he unravels secrets of the Torah. But then, each child will receive a letter, the first letter of their Hebrew name, in the font that you will find in the Torah. It's really a keepsake connecting them to the letters of our new Torah. We also really are planning a family portrait with the Hebrew Torah letter. It'll record the magical moment and provide a family legacy. Now, while Rabbi is focusing on the Torah, Jason Schechter and the Parent Association will provide a coffee chat café for families preparing to engage in this exciting program. Now, you might wonder, what is a child going to do with this Torah letter? Well, I think the youngest children and their parents may find that yarmulke that they made in preschool, and the letter will kind of go in there, and every holiday, they'll take out their little yarmulke and remember the letter. Now, the middle-grade kids, of course, they may have a yarmulke that they got at their cousin's bar mitzvah or their favorite baseball team, and, you know, the letter will go in there, and every time they reach, they'll remember that our community wrote it. and every time they reach, they'll remember that our community wrote a Torah. When the children and the families of our school today place this letter in their b'nai mitzvah yarmulke, it'll be a reminder that the safer Torah read from and carried at that bar mitzvah was written by their RTFH temple community. Some families from our religious school have already selected a dedication and will participate in the writing with the scribe. I'm very excited. And I think one of the things, we made some contacts, and a lot of the... And one of the contacts said to me that... They called back, and they said they asked their seniors, their confirmation class, if they still had their letters and they knew where they were. And not only that, there was a couple of other giveaways that their religious school gave them. And they all knew where they were. They were right with their yarmulkes. Thank you.
I think Seth, I'm next. So, there's opportunities for learning for adults too. In fact, Michael's going to look, go to the website right now and find it. There's lots of Torah study and Torah-related opportunities for adult... Don't look... He's going to be... It's going to give you epileptic seizures. Don't look at that. He'll get there. Including, starting this Friday, when poet Rich Orloff will be here to talk about writing poetry as part of Shabbat services, but we have wonderful study programs all year long at all different times. You've already had a number of them. So there's plenty of opportunities for adults to learn Torah all year long. They're right on the website, a list of all the different things coming up over the months to follow, including classes taught by cantor and me and guest speakers and such. Dedications are wonderful. We're happy to help you find a dedication to connect you to Torah. Remembering your family or honoring your family is wonderful. It's an appropriate way to connect to Torah. Giving money to temple to help support our temple now and in the future is wonderful. Put all of that aside. We're writing a Torah. Torah's at the heart of who we are. It's the guidance. We put it in the most centralized point in our sanctuary. It is the focal point of what we do and we learn. This is our Torah that we're writing. This is the Torah that we will hold and read from on Friday nights, on Saturday mornings, that'll be in our arms on Simchat Torah and Yom Kippur and all throughout the year. It's our Torah. And whether you give $10,000 or $18, we all need to be part of making this Torah happen. Every person who helps in any way to support bringing this Torah to our temple and making it our Torah will be writing this Torah, fulfilling the mitzvah of writing the Torah, fulfilling the connection to their community. And this Torah will be part of our community for generations, and you will always be a part of it. It will always be your Torah. We have wonderful Torehs in our ark, but we didn't write any of them. They're all from other places and other people that we are the privileged caretakers of. This will be our Torah, and we want every one of you to be part of making it happen, and we hope you will. So now, we're going to take questions on things.
So first question is, still trying to understand what it actually means to dedicate a particular verse. Do you get a letter or certificate citing that verse, or do you just get to feel an especially warm glow when that verse is chanted during services?
So you will get a certificate recognizing what your dedication is. So you might pick, "I want to dedicate Sarah, the character of Sarah." "I want to dedicate 'Love Your Neighbor As Yourself.' 'I want to dedicate the parsha that I had my b'nai mitzvah at, or my kids had their b'nai mitzvah at.'" You want to dedicate anything. There are words, verses, passages, phrases, characters, values, ethics, all throughout the Torah. We've made a list of 180 of them. You might find one on that list that's perfect for you. You might want to find a completely different one. You might find one on the list and say, "But it's not in the category I was planning on giving in. I was giving it a different amount, and it's listed." Just come talk to me. We'll figure it out to make it work. You want to dedicate the shma, mika mocha. You want to dedicate. You'll get a certificate recognizing that. And then every one of those dedications is in some way connected to a verse of Torah. There's somewhere where it comes up in the Torah. When it comes up each year, we will remind you about your dedication and connection and invite you to come to synagogue that night and celebrate your family's particular connection to the Torah each year. And maybe do an honor, like open the ark or share the blessings over the Torah, or maybe just be here and know that you helped make this Torah part of your family's life, and that's your special connection to the Torah now and always.
Any questions in the room about anything, either the redevelopment aspects or the... Yeah? So the question is, do we currently have any loans outstanding? We do not.
Is that something we would consider to fund the capital improvements we need?
It's a possibility that we could do that. Loans are difficult to get for synagogues because lending institutions don't want to foreclose on a synagogue. So if you were to take a loan or any house of worship, so if you were to take a loan secured by the building, it's difficult to get. So suppose we could think about it and maybe have it secured another way, so it's a possibility. But we think we can make it work without that.
So I have the mic, and I have a question for Mike. So I think your slide said that a family only has one letter to write amongst family, extended family. If we are... Or not... I guess maybe the first part is, if non-members can also participate, do they have to be sponsored by a member and be part of that letter? Or can we actually go out to our family not members and say, "Hey, there's something great here. Can you donate and write?" Yes was the answer.
This is... This project is open to the extended community. It's not just for temple members. We want your family to do it. We want the people who are here at our temple in other ways, that come to us for Passover or the High Holidays, or who come here for b'nai mitzvah, or once upon a time came here and had their... I meet people all the time who say to me, "Oh, I had my baby naming at this temple. I had my bar mitzvah at this temple." This is the community Torah. This is our community's Torah, and they are all part of our extended community. So anyone can help sponsor a letter. And when you do it, your whole family will come together and write the letter as one. You'll all grab on to the quill, an actual quill, and write in the letter as a family. It's not that you'll dedicate and 12 of you will each write 12 letters. It's going to be a family gathering, all of you together. It works beautifully. We're working with a scribe who... The company, the scribe organization we're working with has done this hundreds of times, and it has worked every time, wherever they go. We spoke into numerous synagogues that they've worked with, and they all spoke about the beauty of your family coming together and filling in a letter. So if you know people who you think have any sort of connection to Torah or temple, and they might be interested in it, send them to the website, grab a brochure in the lobby, connect them with me or any of the chairs of the committee, and we would be delighted to have them be part of our extended Torah project.
Since we would be staying in the same building, are there any plans for improving building accessibility? Is there any possibility that the sanctuary and Bima could be made wheelchair accessible?
So yes, accessibility is one of our top priorities. We understood that when we made the decision to stay, that we have to address the accessibility, because that was a commitment we made to the congregation, and we know how important it is to so many people. So we're looking at a number of possibilities. Of course, getting into access to the sanctuary, to this level, is something that's very important. There are possibilities with elevators or some other ways to do it. And then, within this level too, we certainly will look at all of that. But we understand that that was a major reason why people felt we needed to move, and so it's certainly something we want to address. We haven't gotten to the point of deciding how we'll do it, though. Barbara? Phil Donahue will bring you the mic. I'm dating myself, but...
Hi, I have two questions. One, just as a follow-up, Jason's question. So if you have an extended family member, if they donate $360, they can do their own letter? Yes. So it's just that you can invite people to kind of glom onto your donation, or they can make a separate donation and do their own letter? Okay. And for the dedication, is it... Can just one person choose that dedication? Or can more than one person choose a particular?
So there is one dedication that is affirmed, and that's the Torah itself, which we are very grateful. We have found a temple family that is sponsoring the entire... The Torah is for their family's dedication. But for the rest of the dedications, they're not exclusive. If your kid's Torah portion is this week's vayera, and somebody else's kid's Torah portion is vayera, and your b'nai mitzvah portion was vayera, you can all have vayera. No one owns the Torah. The Torah is shared. So if you want to celebrate Rebecca, or you want "Love Your Neighbor As Yourself," it's yours. There may be other people who also have the same value that they've chosen and will share it most happily. It's not yours. You're helping sponsor it for the whole temple.
Suzanne?
You're getting your steps in, Mike.
Hi, I'm Suzanne, and I'm just curious, how much is this Torah... What's the weight of this Torah? And how does it compare to the Torehs that we were using? What was the weight previously? And what will be the benefit for seniors supposedly?
This Torah, I believe, is about 10 pounds. It is lighter than any of the Torehs in our ark, except for the little mini Torah. Of the three Torehs that we use most regularly, two of them are considerably heavier than that. One of them is just slightly heavier than that, but it's very large physically. This Torah will be a much... We picked the Torah so that all people can carry it. So when we have b'nai mitzvah kids of varying sizes and strengths, that they will all be able to hold this Torah in their arms comfortably and walk around the sanctuary at their b'nai mitzvah and hold it. And if they can hold it, we hope that everybody can hold it. So it will be easy to read. It'll be lightweight. It'll be the right size. It'll be perfect for everybody to embrace and hold that Torah. Does that answer your question?
I have a question. I know there was something that said you can make a donation of $18 towards someone else doing a letter in the Torah, like if their family cannot afford that. So I'd assume it's also possible you could make a donation where you have a letter for your family, and you could also make a donation so that somebody else's family could do a letter.
So I'll give you an example. There's a family at temple that donated $360 so that their family can write a letter. On top of that, they donated additional funds for other families to be able to write a letter. So their total donation is quite larger than $360 in this family's case, but they wanted it divided up, that $360 was going to be for their family to write a letter, and all of the other funds they gave would help other families to write a letter. In this case, they helped identify a family that was special to them, that they knew it would be very meaningful to be able to do this and that they wouldn't be able to do it on their own. If you know someone, come talk to us. Come talk to Jill, to Lois. We will help you through that. But you can also just donate, and we are aware of many people who might struggle to be able to do that, and we want to help them, as many people as possible, be part of it. Marsha, did I cover it all? Different voice saying the same thing.
Yes, and you can also... Go directly onto the forums, and... Sorry, you can also, you know, go directly onto the forums, and they will guide you through the process.
Right.
So I want to thank Rabbi. I want to thank Jill and Neil and Stephanie and Marsha and Mike and Mike and all the other people. As you can tell, a lot of work has gone into making this a really special experience for our entire community. And so I know it's hard to conceptualize it all, but hopefully, this made it a little bit easier. But you'll be hearing more about it, and it'll be a really wonderful occasion, and I hope everyone will take the opportunity to participate, because it's special for your family and for our temple family. So I want to thank you all for your attention, for bearing with us during all these ups and downs and all the struggles we've had on the space. I think we're in a very good place, and it's all because of your support. So thank you. Have a great one. Thank you.